Fiorelli.
No, it's a Fiorelli.
Fiorelli.
What's the matter?
Fiorello LaGuardia.
Yeah. Oh, and I looked up the name of that soup starter. You know, the carrots and onion and spot.
Sal- celery onion and carrots.
Yeah. And there's a name, which I love.
Yeah, this is silly. That question made on page two. New York State law and regulation mitigated by the stormwater. Let me ask you a question from the board. Can't blame somebody for being inconsistent. Form of the state is inconsistent on themselves. So, folks already? All right, folks, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you. Okay, John, you wanna take a quick roll of fog?
Yes. Al Fiorelli.
Here.
Dean Shea.
Here.
Larry Charstein.
Here.
Deborah Trimple.
Here.
Lynn Davidson.
Here.
Tom Butler.
Here.
Dale Baker.
Here.
Eric Worsel.
Here.
Stanley Conlin's action.
Okay, folks, um, we've got three items to discuss tonight. We've got a minor subdivision on Armstrong Road. Got a major subdivision on East Shore Circle. And then we have Dandy Mark. Um, regarding Dandy Mark, we did not schedule, um, a public comment period tonight. Uh, most of tonight we'll be discussing, uh, new changes with the developer. Uh, we'll be going over the traffic study, uh, comments by the public, uh, comments by the town engineer, uh, addressing environmental form, and then if we have time, we may get into Seeker Part Two and Three. There's a lot on the agenda tonight, so we'll see how far we get. Uh, so, let's, uh, go ahead and start with, um, Armstrong Road, who's here tonight. Perry, can you come up to the table, please?
John, should we, do one of these need to go up to the table?
Yeah, I think for sure.
It's for the internet.
I don't think these lights are hooked up, are they? Not the main.
They should be hooked up to the internet.
I don't think they should be doing anything here.
Should be.
Maybe the switch has to be done.
We're just gonna talk around, guys. Okay, forget.
Okay, could you, uh, change your name for the, for the public that's out there in the cloud?
Perry Cook.
Okay, Perry, just a, just a brief summary tonight for your board.
Just a subdivision, my bad.
Clear, um, I went over the, uh, short form, and there was a couple things, um, it mentions a wetland, I saw this on thirteen A, it says, um, it may come up automatically, it says, uh, adjacent wetlands, yes. Is there any wetlands on your property or adjacent to it?
I know it all, it's just a law.
And even if the adjacent parcels?
No.
There's no, uh?
No.
All right, so that should be a no on that thirteen A on page two, and the environmental form.
Notice on question three, it says that the total acreage is nine point nine two acres, but it says that the total acreage that you control or own is four point five two. That's probably me filling it up improperly. Okay, that's what I thought, I'm just gonna state. So that should be nine point nine two as well.
All right, and then on the bottom, there, that, where there's rural, that should be checked, rural, and there is some commercial as well in the area.
Yeah, there's, well, there's ag that's behind it, too.
Yeah, there's ag as well, right.
Who was behind you for the ag data statement? Is that Buck Ground or Young Ground?
Curl.
Curl? Okay, that should be on here if we can, that's just a one thing.
The checkpoint for, uh, wetland was, they use the, uh, auto fill from the state, and there is, there is one, but it's not close to that property.
Okay, okay, so really, you have to know. You have to know when you're back, man. Yeah, and you said, Lynn, you said, who was the owner?
You mentioned Ron Furrow or?
Furrow, Furrow was the last name.
Okay, that should be on the, uh, date at the corner of.
White House, yeah, West Side.
All right.
We can get that in there somewhere.
So, board members, any question on, uh, the layout of the subdivision or anything else?
Bill?
I, I had a question about, uh, twelve B, it says, is the project site, or any portion of it, located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? That's checked, yes.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I think that's the, the auto fill.
That's the state auto fill.
And, let's see, if you go to twelve, question twelve, the archaeological sites just simply says yes on the map or summary report.
John, what do we do on that twelve B?
We can reach out to, uh, to Chip O'Leary, see if there's something specifically on this site.
Have you dug anything up?
I, I think, I think there's an inconsistency there, because the first part of that same question says, no, and the second part says yes. If the, if the first part said no, the second part could say no.
No, it's, it's two different things entirely. One of them is asking if it's on the National or State Registered Historic Places, or if it's eligible to be, and the other's asking if there's any known archaeological sites. So, it, it could, who knows what it could be, it could be prehistory or, or something like that, but in my experience, they tend to buffer that like a mile, it's like one mile buffer, so it could be anywhere around, it may not be on that parcel or adjacent, it's a pretty large area, and they do that to protect those sites.
So, the board can override that or, or not consider that?
Well, I think we should, uh, first thing we could do would be to reach out and see if there's anything specifically on that site. Mr. Cook needs to come back next month, that'll give us some time.
Oh, yeah, so, so we don't need to do the approval tonight?
No.
We're not gonna do?
No, this was just a sketch plan, according to our local laws, even minor subdivisions need to come for a sketch plan.
John, do we keep for Chip O'Leary to buy online a, a search that we can go to for inventory in our town?
And it'll show you those one mile buffer circles.
With, with a night towards that, they've, uh, classified that when the Lansing Market was built, and they made them do a dig, and found that it was, you know, not significant. But that might be why it shows up on here, because that's within a mile.
That's possible, yeah.
Okay, so tonight, we're just gonna go over any other questions, and that's, that's gonna be it for tonight, and then we'll be over next, next month.
Yeah, we can schedule, we can schedule a public hearing for next month.
Okay.
Okay, so, tonight, you should just talk about the general disposition and layout of it, and your questions or concerns you have, Mr. Cook, I'll chance to respond to those, and then for next month, we could, if the board was so disposed, we could, uh, we can schedule a public hearing.
Or, any other questions, folks?
Is there any reason for doing this?
I don't use all property, and it's just a big beautiful lot that I may build a house in someday, I may sell it, and that's all.
And the, the, uh, flag lot road is wide enough?
Excuse me?
The, the entrance from the road is wide enough?
Ninety point five two feet.
I never see those, Dean.
Yes, Lynn? Um, I have a question, down at the, uh, south end, the boundary line there, um, goes right through a carport, and I'm assuming that...
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, I know. Carport. That's my, that's my property as well.
I was gonna say, you currently own both those, so if you were to sell in the future, you could adjust that however you want to.
And it's just a temporary carport.
Okay, okay. And the two, um, point two one acres parcel A is just to give a little bit more to your neighbor there?
To my neighbor, yes.
So that he can have a little more backyard.
Exactly.
Okay. That's pretty reasonable.
Okay, I think, I think we're all set for tonight, then, we'll see you next, uh, next meeting, and hopefully we'll just get approval from there.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't think we have any questions on the subdivision plan, just following up on that shit.
Okay, I'd like to schedule a public hearing for...
Yeah, schedule a public hearing, we'll hear the seeker.
And get that ag data statement filled out.
I was gonna say, there is an ag statement. You, you've notified the adjacent owner?
We will for the public hearing.
You will?
So, I, I took it note that the Curl residence, the Curl state, the Curls.
Okay, we're set, let's, uh, move on to, um, East Shore Circle. All right, can you give your name and your relationships, please?
My name's Jesse Young, and I'm the, uh, subdivision owner working for my, my family, and this is, as you know about the engineering, we're too tired to look at the subdivision and the stormwater.
Okay, uh, Jesse, you wanna give us just a quick over, overview of what's going on?
This is East Shore Circle, and it's the parcel that my uncle John Young has just built a house on, uh, kind of overlooking the Emily Jonas Falls, and we're looking to create five new building lots to the west of that house, and also separate off the land across the road between East Shore Circle and East Shore Drive. So there'd be seven lots created from that one lot. And, you know, we're looking at just the north side of East Shore Circle for now, and we'll, we'll look at the south side of the road later. I think you should have a, a map.
Yeah, we have some, uh, just a rough drawing.
Yeah, so that, that, south of East Shore Circle is just for your information for now, and we'll be looking at that later, but we're hoping to get the north side of the road done, and we've got three conforming building lots along East Shore, or with, with the required frontage on East Shore Circle, and two flag lots behind those, and depending on all the stormwater calculations come out, we probably rearrange things and see how that works. And everything on the, uh, on the parcel handle jack would be basically untouched.
Why, uh, what's behind the reservation for the future road? Does that, does that lead to a parcel that's suitable for development?
There are multiple parcels off of the end of that, uh, to the, of that area, and we do not own or control or have any interest in them right now, but at some point in the future, you know, they may decide they want to sell some land in the back, and they may decide to purchase it, and if not, we, they may wanna subdivision lots in the back, and we wanna leave an opening for them to be able to access to the lots.
So, how, how would we do, there would just be a deed, there'd be a reserve in the deed for a future road?
We would likely retain a right of way across that personally ourselves, and we would either use that ourselves or give it to somebody else in the future.
So, John, we, I guess we gotta go through Guy to see how to structure that, probably, correct?
Well, they would, they would give us a, sort of, some, a starting point, we'd pass it through Guy and make sure that that mustered.
Okay, yeah, I can believe it. And then, how about, um, like, this, it says Lot Five, and it's a flag lot, what's the distance again, I keep forgetting, for the fire truck and the turnaround? I'll find that.
Five hundred.
I believe it's five hundred feet.
So, Andy, are we, are we beyond five hundred feet on that?
Uh, we should be to the frontage of the lot.
I'm sorry, what was that?
To the middle of the lot, maybe, maybe close to four hundred feet.
Okay.
And does there need to be a turnaround?
It's under five hundred, no.
Ah, it can back out?
Somebody can wait that long.
And then, and then there's a, there's a, there's a trail, I think the, I think the biggest thing we need to, to go over is, is, is the trail that's on, it's, it's on this, this whole parcel, correct? Does it exist on the trail or not? Is that on this parcel we're considering?
It's on the trail of the house.
That's on one with the house.
Correct, so, but that's part of this whole development, correct? So, Deb, we don't, we, we don't have a trail committee, correct, anymore?
No, I quit that committee when they came up with the Emily Jonas Falls, 'cause I didn't think it was a very safe trail.
Okay.
Um, but what is the status now? Is this an officially recognized trail with parking, excuse me, with parking?
Hundred percent private, you own and control the trail.
Okay, and what about parking for the trail?
There is parking for the trail.
Dedicated?
No, it's private, hundred percent private.
Okay, so you have to know about it to do it?
A lot of people do.
Yeah, I know.
Joe, did you have, you wanna comment on this?
I just wanna say, the trails committee is still active, even if it's not meeting regularly, everyone was appointed through twenty twenty-three, and so it's still official now, committee.
Okay, so I would like this to go before the Trails Committee to get their feedback on this project, according to John, did that get scheduled with them?
I can, um, the town used to have some, some sort of claim on this trail that was officially relinquished.
Oh, good.
It's, it's been, been orally extinguished, so...
But as part of this development, the planning board can request, uh, that be initiated again, correct? I mean, we've done that on other projects, where we felt the trail, it was important to have a trail on, uh, on the parcel.
Yeah.
So, what, board members, where...
I would keep in, just keep in mind that the towns, the town has, has had this trail and has officially relinquished that in the past, so...
Have you been down that trail?
I am.
It's...
I was, uh, with the, uh...
Yeah.
People on the Trail Committee represented and the Planning Board, the trail was laid out, and, uh, if anything, Deb is understating it, and if somebody owns the land, as, that is, that is not a beginner's type trail. It's, uh, steep, um...
Wet?
Wet. Takes quite, you know, you don't wanna be a first-time hiker going on that sort of thing, and I personally would see why, having been relinquished, uh, by the town, not taking any, so the town doesn't take any responsibility for the liability for a property owner would be immense.
Or should it even be part of it? If it's a private trail, then the town has no liability, do they?
Well, I'm just saying, just does, is this going to, we've had other parcels where the planning board has said, we want a trail on the, the rear, the back forty or whatever. Is this, is, is this parcel, should this be subject to a trail? That's what I'm asking.
It is a trail that's used by a, a number of people, uh, still today, and I remember when they put it together, you're right, it's steep, and it has to be maintained, et cetera, but it's a very nice trail, I mean, it really is a nice trail. Well, there has been maintenance on it over the years that we've retaken control. Uh, it's still not in great shape, and I would definitely agree that a first-time hiker probably would be the best candidate to walk down.
And then you got a comment?
I think that, uh, if it's fully owned by Jack and...
It's fully owned by, uh...
And there's absolutely no reason for it to be part of this, from our point of view, this subdivision, un- unless you're trying to put it in as a positive for the subdivision, which I don't hear.
I hadn't intended to, to...
Talk about that.
To talk about it at all, it's not, it's not part of, you know, of, one of the, you know, the things we're considering, it's...
Yeah, I'd say it's an afterthought of the map, and we just ought to think about the subdivision without trail.
I still wanna comment from the Trail Committee about it.
I agree. Yeah, I think this is different than what we're looking at with, like, a P U D, where we're saying that it's part of the amenities there, we wanna make sure that there's good trails for people to be able to get, get out to services or the high ground.
Well, I mean, we did this up right off of Tripphammer Road, the last adult, we required a trail along the back of the lots, remember? Right off of Tripphammer Road, twelve lots subdivision, did last year?
Mm-hmm.
We had a trail along the back of the lots, at least.
All right, anyways, we, we've got a, well, that's gonna come up, so I, I wanted to bring it up, and we'll, we'll get a comment from the Trails Committee. Any else about the layout, folks? Time, Dave, Larry?
I'm, I'm assuming that when you tighten things up, there's stormwater for each individual parcel.
Well, the only thing I worry about is how relinquished the rights to the trail, if there's anything, if, if it's within our purview to talk about it at all.
I, I would say that.
I concur on that as well.
Well, I get a comment from Guy, he'll listen. All right, back to the, uh, so we've, we've got, uh, what, the question was on the driveway or future road and legal, and then the question is, uh, the town gave up, uh, any interest in it, what legal has to say about the trail, and, and, uh, just a comment from the Trails Committee. So, anything else about the north, I guess it's the north side of this, this parcel?
We've lined the road up, this potential driveway for Phase Two, which is, okay, what we'll be looking for. The road frontage is all good, I guess, it's always, you know, seventy-five feet should be plenty for developing a road there.
I'd like, I have one question to clarify, the, uh, the driveway there for Phase One, did I hear you say that there was potential for combining those two driveways and allowing shared access to the, uh, lots behind another place, or behind the, uh, the property that you don't own, in case, if they wanted to approach it?
We would like to retain the right to do that, and we're not saying that that will happen, or that we will do it, um, but there's only, like, I mean, there's only gonna be one driveway that services lots four and five.
Well, seventy-five feet there, you got plenty of room, so that's good.
Play a room, but we, you know, we wanted to make sure that we, uh, and, and, and each of those lot owners, you know, wouldn't necessarily own jointly that seventy-five feet, they would, they would each only own their thirty-foot strip.
Right, if it was left that way, yes.
Yeah.
I understand. And then, Guy, the state did not want driveways off of thirty-four, at least the southern thing, or the second phase, you get the idea?
We don't know what they would want yet, we, we haven't approached them. I would anticipate that they would be hesitant to, to, to allow any more driveways there, although maybe on the southern side of the frontage on that road, they might okay something down there.
Okay.
But we haven't decided yet.
Should, I, I think we should mention that the town is reluctant to accept private driveways, or accept under extreme circumstances, shared driveways, so if you can kind of bear that in mind when you're making future plans, whether that's gonna be a driveway or a, uh, private road with a L-shaped flag access, or whatever you wanna call it?
I mean, the, the roadway part of it would, is just, you know, making sure that there's an opening in the future, in case that was desirable for, uh, the neighbors, or us, or for the town, um, you know, it's not going to be a road, uh, you know, for this part, we just wanna make sure we keep the ability to do that.
That's Phase One. Phase Two, Larry is, Larry is saying that the town would probably rather see that driveway as a public road with a, what do you call it, hammerhead or whatever it's called? Well, otherwise, it's, uh, three, six, uh, six, you know, lab block parcels. But there is that nice wide access, you can figure something out that'll work.
Yeah, so driveway access, when we, when we start adding it in Phase Two, then we'll do the O T C.
That's just, yeah, just a, just a, kind of, a look ahead. Okay, folks, anything else on this? John?
Yeah.
Will I tell you this?
Yeah, uh, so we moved into preliminary subdivision, I think, when we were ready, you anticipate that for next month?
If we really do it, maybe we can submit next month for previous month, we have work to do. Full-on patient use of the possibility.
Okay, so, would the board feel comfortable scheduling a public hearing on a preliminary?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
On the twenty-fourth?
And we could do the seeker.
Keep in mind that we have preliminary and a final, so this is a two-step routine.
The fourth Monday of December runs right up on...
Oh, yeah, that's true, so it would be, it would be December public hearing.
If, if we're, if we're ready, we would submit in December, or maybe January?
January, okay.
That'd be the earliest, so you wanna schedule that.
Put your plan for the next meeting in December.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, the first, the first one came up.
Okay, so we're looking for January on this one.
Okay, all right, great, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there any sort of, uh, seeker determinations to short form, long form, for this meeting or something that would happen? I'm not familiar with your sketch plan.
Yeah, so the portion classified as, um, and in my opinion, this is an unlisted action, uh, and I would, I would recommend the use of a short one.
All right, that's right, so, yeah.
There's no need to do all... Some previous commercial development.
Okay? Andy, I, I would like to just, I want you to think about, uh, you know, of, of a more holistic stormwater approach, are the individual lots, I understand it has to be on an off production, but we're probably looking for them in stormwater district.
Yeah, I think we can probably get in, possibly, uh, send out as many as we can pitch them.
Yeah, and Jesse, that way we're sort of avoiding the, you know, whatever you want to ask.
Yeah, and that, that...
It's certainly makes sense, we've seen some issues come up with individual lots, for sure.
So we'll see if we can...
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Dandy Mark, oh, come on up.
I'm gonna reach around to get the second log.
Just ran out of money for the second K E, didn't like the timing.
Somebody needs to watch the game.
I was thinking, you know, planning for a big sale, just to take it for a...
I offered to buy one, it's a big deal.
Spend close-up time with me, Lynn?
No, I trust, I'll sit next to Al, you can definitely be comfortable.
Thank you, sir.
Al, I just wanted to read the papers, it's hard for the folks to come to here with...
I'm sorry, Bill, I can't hear you.
Want people to shuffle papers, can they make some really firm, and folks are on line to hear what you've got?
Recording in progress.
Okay, I mean, we just said a lot of stuff in front of us, John, that's all we can do.
I know, I'm just, I'm just making you aware.
Okay. Do you hear that, folks?
No wrestling.
We'll do it in the news, Joe.
Traffic engineer.
Great, did you hear?
I hear you, so I think you...
That's fine, we can, we can, I was gonna talk about some of the new changes first, and then bring them in, is that okay?
Yep.
All right, guys, can...
Al, could I, could I read a statement?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right.
As a member of the Planning Board, I am recusing myself from any role regarding the application of Dandy Mark. Uh, the Planning Board asked the Conservation Advisory Council to weigh in with comments regarding the Dandy Mark application. I am also a member of the Conservation Advisory Council, but I am resigning at the end of the year, and was involved in developing the response from the Conservation Advisory Council to the Planning Board. In order to not give the perception that there is any, is a conflict of interest for me, I will recuse myself from the Dandy Mark issue. So I'm gonna...
Can you give that to Heather, can we, she needs...
Well, this is, uh, I would have to, yeah.
Okay.
I got a, a lot of scratches.
That's all right, give her a copy of that, so she can, that way she can... Thank you. All right, thank you, John. All right, folks, can you all state your name and your relationship for the folks that are up there?
I'm Jamie Hansel, the Phase Engineer, I'm the project engineer. Wayne Phillips, General Manager.
It's just okay, guys, um, I guess let's, we, we got a lot of stuff today that we haven't seen before, we just, just got to us, uh, tonight, so, uh, this, this whole package here.
That was submitted last year.
Submitted this last month.
In October, we just said it, you haven't seen it.
Yeah, I'll wait.
We submitted for this, Al, what, David Krzyzewski?
To be on a November meeting, you do submit in October. That's not a strange thing, guys.
Well, let's, since we have, we have the traffic consultant on right now, I was going to go over the new items, let's, let's switch gears and let's talk about the, the traffic study. So let's go, is that okay with you, fellas?
Yep, I actually, right before your.
Okay, so let's start with the traffic study. And there was a, there was a comment right in the very beginning, I think I can give Dean a read this morning. Conclusion, do you mind? Just read that out, just as a start.
So, let's see, this is on page five of the traffic study, and actually, it says page forty-six down the lower right. This is section two, item C, conclusions and recommendations. This traffic impact study identified and evaluated the potential traffic impacts that can be expected from the proposed Dandy Mart project in the town of Lansing, New York. The results of this study determine that the existing transportation network can adequately accommodate the projected traffic volumes and resulting minor impacts to study area intersections with the following improvements in place. The following sets forth a conclusion and recommendations based upon the results of the analysis. And the conclusions are, the proposed development is expected to generate approximately ninety-one entering, ninety-two exiting vehicle trips during the AM peak hour, and seventy-six entering, seventy-six exiting vehicle trips during the PM peak hour. Not all these driveway volumes are new, but instead, a portion of the proposed volume is reduced considering pass-by adjustments. Conclusion two, thus, the proposed site is expected to generate approximately forty-five entering, forty-six entering new vehicle trips during the AM peak hour, and thirty-eight entering, thirty-eight exiting new vehicle trips during the PM peak hour. Conclusion three, all study area movements operate at LOSD and LOS is something.
Level of service.
Level of service. Level of service D or better during peak hours, under the existing projected background and projected full development conditions. Conclusion four, the volume warrants for left turn lanes at the proposed access locations are not fully satisfied during either peak hour. Conclusion five, based on the analysis of the current site plan, the drive-through provides storage for approximately four passenger vehicles. The analysis indicate that there is sufficient stacking space on site to accommodate the projected drive-through demands. All right, and there's two recommendations here. Number item six, minor signal timing adjustments are recommended during the peak hour under background conditions. Number seven, future improvements noted in the 2021 Lansing Town Center TIS prepared by SRF Associates at this intersection, based on the projected impacts resulting from the Dandy Mart project, based upon the unknown timeframe of the Lansing Town Center project. The noted improvements are not required at this time. However, the proposed site design should anticipate the construction of these future improvements in the way of considerations related to setbacks from future turn lanes and sidewalk connections.
Okay, thanks, Dean. All right, do you want to summer, a little more summary?
Sure. Did you say David is on?
Yes, yeah, we have David on, on the Zoom call here.
Pretty much, we were able to review the traffic study, and it's pretty much what we anticipated. This type of use is a pass-by use, which means it doesn't generate a heck of a lot of traffic, it actually utilizes the existing traffic that's on the roadway network. It's not as much of a destination, say, like, you know, rack rink, Town Hall, it's, it's, you know, these aren't placed in the middle of nowhere, they're placed on well-traveled roads, and that's, that's what we want. And then, one of our things is, we did, based on the study that was previously performed, the site plan has been developed in accordance with that, so that there's sufficient room to work with the future improvements.
So, were there any changes as a result of this traffic study that you made to the site plan?
No, it's, the only change that we've added to the site plan really since the last time is to put sidewalks all the way around, and that was based on town discussions with DOT.
So, John, you reviewed the, in-depth, the traffic study. Can you help the board out with any conclusions of the result of the study?
Well, the, the result of the study is that no changes are required at this time until critical thresholds are met from surrounding development. The board may want to keep in mind whether or not there's enough room, the way the site is designed right now, for those changes to the intersection to be made. You know, will the sidewalks have to be moved, that kind of thing?
So that's, that's my concern here, is not that there, those changes are required now, but in the future, if turn lanes are installed, and then the sidewalks have to be driven out, and the green spaces move back into what's, what's existing, uh, paved, parking, and driving areas, it's concerned that you're going to.
Speaking.
Traffic patterns, so if you look at C eighteen, for instance, it goes in the lower right, and the traffic pattern goes between the green space, the northeast corner, and the building, and the same thing in the lower left here, also shows traffic pattern through there. I'm concerned that if you end up with future turn lanes, and you have to pull the sidewalk out, and block of trees, you have to move that back fifteen feet, would that affect the traffic there around that east, northeast, and north side of the building?
Sure, so, um, just between the sidewalk, I don't have the exact dimension on hand, but we can give it to you pretty quick, but, um, we've actually made that at least twenty, twenty-five feet of lines, so we can just totally shred that. So there's, let's, instead of C eighteen, let's go to the site plan. So, let's zoom in a bit. So you can see right now, we have sixteen feet from the edge of, excuse me, edge of our asphalt to our, our concrete path, the canopy. This area is actually wider, the green space between the sidewalk and our edge of pavement, and then there's additional space between the, the edge of state roadway to, or state road to the sidewalk. This is, um.
Not much.
Oh, no, it's a lot, actually.
I see a dash line, like, very close to the, the edge of the sidewalk.
Right, but that's a five-point sidewalk.
So, from the existing edge of pavement to our edge of asphalt is twenty-four feet.
Is any of that twenty-four feet owned by the state, or is the pavement the right-of-way line?
Um, the pavement, the right-of-way line actually comes down a little, it's hard to see on this, this drawing. It pretty much, the sidewalk is the edge of the right-of-way.
Oh, it is, the sidewalk would be the, so some of that green space to the north of the sidewalk does lie within the state's right-of-way.
Yep. Okay. And if need be, that sidewalk can be brought into our site, we, we actually discussed that many other times, the idea of doing the sidewalk in the, in the site versus out of the site, but DOT and I believe the town prefer that the sidewalk was closer to the road.
Yeah, see, my concern is that if that all has to shift in fifteen feet, would that affect the, you know, built infrastructure there?
Well, the biggest, I think the biggest impact to is, would ultimately be end up a loss of green space. I think we can accommodate the change in sidewalk, you know, whether it ends up to be internal, you know, into the blacktop area, you know, it's going to be a loss of green space, ultimately. You know, and as you get closer to the intersection, you know, where the greatest impacts of any change would likely be felt, obviously, we've got much, a much bigger buffer there to work with.
Yeah, in the future, if you're talking about moving those sidewalks into the existing parking area, that, that doesn't really work, I mean, you have to have some kind of a buffer between.
No, I mean, you could actually move it against our pavement.
Right, so, yeah, as long as it's, it's elevated, separated, curving.
Yep.
Between, keep people from running into pedestrians.
We're proposing curb all the way around there.
Because obviously, it doesn't make sense to not have enough movement in the future, you know?
Right, and there's about, from this part of our parking lot to the existing edge of pavement, you know, where the fog line would be for a future lane, that's not, it's a little bit more than we expected.
Would it be productive to talk about citing the sidewalk where it would have to be moved if the turning lane was added?
I think we've talked about that before, and then we moved it back to where it is now. We've been back and forth on that discussion a couple of times. I believe, I thought the consensus at this time was to put it where we have it.
Yeah, it was. And you haven't had any feedback from the DOT, whether they're considering a turning lane there at all, correct?
It doesn't sound like there are any.
Their study doesn't.
Their, their study says maybe in the future.
In the future, if there's further development, but based on our project, it's not recommended.
I'd like to see something in the plan, though, that would maintain a significant amount of green space, because I think one of the things that could make this tolerable is some green space, so you don't have this big old truck stop right in the middle of everything, but there is green space and something that breaks up the, the look of it.
Well, that's, that's a hundred feet from this drive, this pedestrian access onto the sidewalk to our edge of pavement, this, this is a large green space area.
Right there, yeah, but back further, it's not.
So, it doesn't look like there's as much of a challenge, obviously, in the northeast corner, along the northern boundary, it looks like the east boundary, maybe there's a little bit more of a challenge, in terms of, it'd be nice to not have to tear out trees in order to be able to move the sidewalk. Because, because you're going to be planting those trees now, and they're going to get mature, and then about the time they get mature is the time they want to. But I guess on that, yeah, and that's like, because they're talking about turn lanes for both roads, potentially in the future.
So what's, what's, your consensus is, we, it's okay where it is for now, because chances are, it's going to be a long time down the road before the state decides whether they want to put a turning lane in. There may be adequate space already in that intersection for a turning lane, if you reconfigure the way it is, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, from, from the, your timeframe for getting a turning lane is greater than ten years from now, I mean, this is not, and you would have to see some pretty decent growth.
And the typical.
I guess that's a more of a question for David.
And the typical length of the turning lane, or, you know, that distance, it's, where would it be if they did put it in, where would it line up roughly? Just your guessing, any idea? Or did David?
I don't know what David drove there, because he's looked at a lot.
Yeah, excuse me, David Cruzey speaking from Pass Road Associates. The, the turn lane, they're typically based on stopping site distance, DOT is typically based on that. So, on this, on this road, it's, the posted speed limit is forty-five, so it would be forty-five plus five miles per hour for your design speed. So theoretically, if there were no, if there's, were in a vacuum, it would be four-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. However, DOT takes into other, takes into variables, into consideration, such as roadside constraints, actual vehicle speeds approaching an intersection, you know, for example, here, you're, you're after a bend approaching a site, you're approaching a signal, so vehicle speeds are going to be a little slower, typically, on average. So that four, that four-twenty-five is really just sort of a, a starting point as a rule of thumb for that design speed. DOT would not likely hold their, you know, hold, hold a, a lot of weight to that, put a lot of weight to that. So, it'd likely be, try to fit it in, perhaps so that the proposed driveway is not within the turn lane, as well as perhaps try to keep it as much as possible in the taper, at the very least. Obviously, ideally, you would want to be out of that, but we're, you know, we're not, we're dealing with, you know, a defined amount of roadside frontage here, so, you know, the DOT is going to try to, try to, if they require it, they'll, they'll not try to make an adverse or a, a safety issue by putting the driveway, or the turn lane, in a precarious situation where there's conflicts with the proposed driveway, Conlon Road, and what, what have you.
Right, but I'm just saying, from this intersection, it would only go halfway to the lot, is what I'm anticipating, the turn lane, or would it, you're saying it might even go all the way to the driveway, the turn lane?
Uh, there's a potential, yeah, there's potential for that. Obviously, that, that right turn movement is a pretty heavy movement in the, in the morning, so there's a chance, there's a chance that that, you know, it could certainly, the storage bay, the storage part of it, could reach close to where the proposed driveway is, and then it starts to taper back. It's not uncommon for perhaps the taper for the, for a turn lane and a driveway to be within it. So, that could be, I mean, that, you could literally be talking about, that is your storage, is basically the frontage, and then it tapers back and it begins, you know, just west of Conlon Road. But DOT will, will certainly want to, you know, they'll review and they'll, they'll make sure they're not putting any parties in a, in a bad spot as much as possible.
Yeah, a question for Dave. Dave, how much of an encroachment of the finished property do you expect the width of the turning lane would, would take?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, the question for that is, DOT, they may, it's going to be based on what they want to keep for shoulder space, particularly because I know from us working on the corridor project through here, that bike space, or at least shoulder space is distable, and, and certain DOT roadways, they certainly require there to be a minimum shoulder space, based on its classification. I'm not quite certain of the classification where this would stand in terms of the Highway Design Manual, however, some leeway can be given if you're at an intersection like this. So they'll obviously want to fold with turn lane, perhaps ten feet, eleven feet is probably the minimum, and then a shoulder space, if you want to make sure that bikes are accommodated, you're not really going to be putting bikes in the shoulder to the right, the right turn lane, but you'll rather put them in the, between the turn lane and the through lane, so there would be perhaps maybe a small shoulder space as a buffer, maybe an eleven-foot turn lane, and then a five-foot, five-foot bike lane, if that's what they're going to require. We're seeing that a little more often, as they try to adhere to the state's complete streets policy when they, when they're going through and doing roadway projects. So that's something that, that could be in play here. lane, but you'll rather put them in the, between the turn lane and the through lane. So there would be perhaps maybe a small shoulder space as a buffer, maybe a 11-foot turn lane, and then a five-foot, five-foot bike lane, if that's what they're going to require. We're seeing that a little more often as they try to adhere to the state's complete streets policy when they, when they're going through and doing roadway projects. So that's something that, that could be in play here. Try to answer your conceptual, what's the cross section, cross section look like?
Thank you. So we could be looking at 16 feet.
But that, that's assuming they're going to keep the center line in the same spot. They could always move the center line to the north to get more.
They don't really have a lot of room on the north side.
Oh, they got a lot of room on the north side. They got probably about 15 feet on the north side. Same thing on the east side of the, so.
Well, it's only a house.
I think a worst case scenario, we've got to look at the fact that they might not take anything on the north side, and it would all be coming this way, because they do things their own way.
They can, they can take 100% on this side and won't impact our project. We have room on our project to put, we can actually even take the sidewalk into, out of the right way on our property.
Lynn, did you get?
I just, I just think we're looking for, if you look north and you look south, we can all be about complete streets, but to put the complete streets program here for 200, 300 feet and then funnel people in there and expect them to get back out again, it, to me, it doesn't make any sense to do that, but that doesn't mean the state of New York is always using common sense. They got to do the whole damn thing or they're going to do it.
Okay, well, I said, we did have it open for public comment, but if you have a question, I'll entertain your question. Is that okay?
Yeah, should I still introduce myself?
Sure, introduce it at once it's a question.
It is a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Max McKenzie. I'm a lifelong resident of Lansing, and I'm concerned citizen about this. When we were talking about green state space, the gentleman emphasized the size of the green space on the corner there. I would like to hear a percentage of how much of that green space, if he's looking at it, I think we're going to wind up with about 20% of the green space on the north and east side that's shown, because we're going to have to move in the sidewalks in, and that's going to entirely wipe out that entire sliver on the east side. So I would just ask what percentage of green space shown would actually still remain after we moved in the, well, the turn lanes, the shoulder, the sidewalks, all of that.
But that, again, that turn lane may not be 10 years, 15 years down the road. We don't know.
Would we still want the green space then?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
It does not count towards our green space. That green space is in the right of way, we don't count, that is our, that is our green.
So you're saying that's not, it's not figured in the fore enough? So losing that green space is not going to make it, I mean, visually, it may make a difference, but according to the standards or the percentages that you have in, in the plan, it doesn't affect.
Yeah, we base everything based on our property.
What you own, what you control.
Yes. So our 63% law coverage is that.
So that wouldn't change, because the land they're talking about losing is not your property, the state property?
Correct, it's within the right of way.
Just wanted to make that clear.
And the state could demand to change that at any time if they want to. Why should shoulder even?
Sure, and if, and to be honest, if they needed land, I'm sure we can work with it, but, you know, that's, that is more force majeure type of approach. We would, you know, I don't think we could be.
So, so David, with this going before the DOT, will they give us more details on that potential for future turn lanes as part of this project?
Yeah, they could, they could provide some commentary on that to start, especially if you're looking to try and get this in before that ever comes to fruition. It's critical for a developer or an applicant to make sure that there's no surprises, you know, five or 10 years down the road. So, if, I would expect it would be. If not, it's certainly a question. It's worthwhile to ask that question directly to make sure that that is not overlooked at this stage.
So, John, what's your recommendation on this?
We can reach out to the DOT to ask about the potential for turn lanes and how it may impact the project. I'm sure DOT is taking a look at that. I think the board should keep in mind what the, what the project owner has said, that they've got room to move the sidewalks if they need to, that all of the sidewalks could be within the site, sidewalks can be replaced. If the, if the state does an acquisition, they're going to replace, you know, what they find, at least in my experience.
Our last conversation with DOT is they're just, they have our stage two application. They're waiting to approve that after the seeker's done. So they have no, at this time, they're not giving a say.
So they are waiting on us before you get any more comments from them?
Yeah, at this point. The final sign. We've added, so there was a number of items that they've asked for, which we've included in our drawings, which, you know, they'll see these weird long item numbers, the DOT item numbers. Those, these, these revisions have been incorporated into our drawings. So we've already received a number of comments that they wanted on our drawings.
Is that the October 26? Is that the October 26 exchange with DOT?
Yes.
Yes, there were numbers.
Lots of numbers.
I would personally like to see a map sketching out what changes you would need to make were there these turning lanes put in, just so we could look at it and say, oh, that's still going to be an attractive project, as opposed to, oh, good lord, the thing's going to be in the road.
So, we don't know what they would want, to be honest, but too, is the likelihood of this happening, I don't know. But it's kind of tough for us to kind of guess what they would want. I don't know, it just, we can't.
They have no standards?
Do a non-plan project is what I'm kind of getting at.
At this point, it's hypothetical, because they could split the difference between our property and project owners on the other side. I mean, it could all be us, it could all be them.
Right, I said that earlier. We don't know if the center line is going to be moved.
To design that, to me, the, if the board's comfortable with it, and I don't like to do things twice, we could relocate our sidewalk in where, in our best estimate and conversations that we've had, it's likely to be out of the course of any future development, so that hopefully it's not impacted.
Right. I mean, literally, we could put it, like I said, we've talked about this before, I don't know if this is going to work. Nope. Put it right up against this.
I wouldn't come all the way to the curb.
No, give like a three.
Three or four foot buffer from our edge of curb, and make that where the position of our sidewalk.
So it sounds like some of the board members would like to see maybe move that in a little bit, just as a little, as a precaution. You're saying that's feasible at this point in time? You could move that in two, three, four feet, and still have greenery on the south and greenery on the north, is that correct?
Yes, it's just the, the first, the visual of it isn't likely to change much. It's the location of the sidewalk and the location of some of the trees and plant positions will flip.
There'll still be adequate space to put the trees in between the sidewalk and the pavement, so to speak.
Oh, yeah, there's, basically, like Lance mentioned, it'd just be flipping the landscaping with the sidewalk.
I don't know how we look at the blobs. I'm seeing blobs, but it looks like most of your larger plantings potentially are fairly far back to begin with.
Yeah, realistically, I wish I could draw it, I don't know why.
So it sounds like the consensus of the board, if I'm speaking okay with you guys, is that if it's possible, we'd like you to move that sidewalk in a little bit, just as a more safety net or precaution, should the state decide to put in a turning lane. It would, it would prevent you from having to tear it all up again and relocate it, just relocate it further to the south, but still leave greenery to the south, and you're really not going to change the volume of greenery, you're just going to be moving the sidewalk to a different location. Is that correct?
Correct.
You guys okay with all? Okay?
And then what we'll do, so this, this will pretty much be offset, you see how it is right now. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because obviously, we want to get this done next month. Offset this sufficient to imagine what we're talking about, to give as much room for a future lane there. And then, it's going to come in here a little bit more, too. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll create a little landing pad for the crosswalk, the future crosswalk. It'll be more into, if you can see that circle, I'm sorry, if that's the courtesy, use that hand. So it'll, the curb will just be scooched in.
So where, where the sidewalk comes in from the northeast? Towards the in-camp parking area. As you cross the McCann there, is that going to be raised?
No, that's just going to be a crosswalk.
Just be a straight crosswalk.
Yeah. Mainly because of plowing, to be honest, it's.
Okay, so we've, I think we've pretty well tackled the sidewalk. Is there, back to the traffic study, David is still with us. Board members, you have any concerns with the ingress egress, as well as David talked about the drive-through? Dave?
Yeah, I had some concerns and questions for you guys. The data that David used is based on coffee and doughnut shops. Is that essentially what your drive-through is going to be, coffee and doughnuts?
Primarily.
Wow, is it or not?
I mean, the morning is going to be primarily, I would expect, coffee. Coffee and breakfast sandwiches.
I, because they say here a 35 second service rate. Is that something that's possible, or are you going to be serving more kinds of food than just coffee and doughnuts in a breakfast room?
There will be more types of food going out the window than that, and I'll be honest, we don't operate a drive-through today. So I can't tell you exactly operational metrics and time sequence and what a drive-through menu for us will look like. It's something that we're building into all of our store designs, recognizing that it's something we'll probably need to operate in the future.
I anticipate not everything on your menu is going to go through that.
Absolutely not. Our menu's too, too much made to order to put many of the things out of drive-through windows.
So we also talked about what's, what's related to this, and we were worried about, you know, again, if, if there's, there's a, I don't know if it's called stacking or standing, so, you know, you see that in the convenience stores where somebody makes a special order, and rather than backing up the traffic, they park them to the side and then deliver their order. Will you be trying to do that here? Will you have a standing or stacking? What's the term?
Waiting area.
Waiting area.
Side.
Staging?
We just added it, because that was one of your comments that you received recently. So we added that here. That's, we were thinking a spot there. The other nice thing, though, is there is sufficient parking all the, all the way around, that we could reserve a couple of these things.
That's what I was wanting, or do something like that, just.
I think that's, I think that's probably.
Right, I just wanted to say, you might want to have a signage there to say, reserve for whatever, waiting or whatever it is, and that way, you're not going to back anybody up.
Waiting day one, waiting day two, waiting day three. Yeah, we've been discussing that. It's really going to get to be the function of, like Lance said, is how they operate their drive-through. It's, it's a new piece to their.
David, you want to expand on that at all? Anything that we were talking about? Did you hear that?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, those are, those are good strategies to reduce the potential for spillage, either throughout the site or back onto a main road. You know, this is not going to be, the, the drive-through generator is not going to be, if you're all familiar with Tim Hortons out in the Buffalo area, something where they need, essentially, they're written in the code out there, I think, minimum of 15 to 18 spaces in some, some communities there, because that's what they truly generate. And we, we see on smaller sites, in fact, the, some of the data, at least for the drive-through traffic, we looked at a, quickly, is an Avon, which had a coffee shop, coffee and doughnut shop, very similar to what's being proposed here as a, as a component, and, you know, you get a small portion of that traffic, that certainly is going to that service. Others are also getting gas, going inside, and purchasing their coffees and whatever else from that. But the advent of mobile ordering has helped, those pull-off lanes after you've made an order, those are helpful. Mobile ordering pickups at the drive-through also help. Starbucks does that quite often. So, you know, we expect that, yes, on, on average, you know, you're, you're looking at, you know, three, four vehicles or less will be, will be stacked in this, in this queue, but it's, it's certainly going to take the operations side of it and inside to make sure that, that traffic is flowing smoothly and making sure that people are getting their orders as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, let's see, any thoughts on the circulation on the site? Any questions on that?
I, I just have a question on the green, the green space question here. A question on, like, on the northeast corner here. You've got parking in front of it. Do you need that parking area? Could that be just area for people dining out there and put some of the parking more in the back of it, so you have more green space coming closer to the building?
The problem we have is the drive-through. The drive-through has to be up against the back. We, a lot of places prefer the drive-through in the back instead of the front, so that's why we.
Your drive-through in the back, yeah.
And the other, the other problem, if we tried to relocate that parking, is then you are conflicting passenger cars with larger trucks that would be fueling in the back, which is a conflict we, you know, we try to minimize. We go to great lengths to try to separate classes of vehicles as much as we can.
That's why I think having.
This store is designed with three entrances, and one of the entrances is facing that intersection, as you're talking about.
Yeah, that's why I think having the big trucks in the back and the fueling station in the back is just not a good idea, and I've said that before, but I guess you're, you're destined to do that, I think. But, yeah, it just seems if you could pull that green space in a bit, it would, you know, it'd give you more visually from the road, it would look much more, less asphalt and more green space.
I think, I think you'll, you'll be surprised once that's, if, if and when that's in place, that there's, there's going to be, it's going to be a nice little corner right there as far as the walk, the trees and the greenery. I think you'll, I think you'll be impressed if it does, if everything works out.
If you kind of compare areas, you know, distance wise, between the road and the building next door versus the road and the parking, it's more green space here.
Even if the state takes a full 16 feet, there's still 84 feet of front lawn in that green space, which is more than, well, lacking a little bit of three times the setback that the town requires.
Now, if you went like a form-based approach, you had a building right up, up against there, so I mean, green space.
Not necessarily. It depends on the form.
Almost form-based codes has to be.
Yes, I, I understand that we have done that in other places, but that doesn't really fit for this use.
Now, we had the same issue in my, my town as we had in a form-based, and it didn't quite, no one liked it, once we started doing that.
Okay, well, let's get there, to the traffic study and traffic pattern. So, the traffic study has no, really no negative impact outside the site coming in or onto, correct, John?
That's correct.
And then now let's just talk real quickly, the traffic pattern on the site, were there any questions?
Question?
Okay, if it's a question, go ahead.
It's a question. One thing is, the gentleman never answered, how much greenery is going to be left? The gentleman behind me asked.
If we could get a percentage, that would be great.
And the second part is.
Hold on, go ahead.
The second part of my question is, these trucks are long. To have a turn lane and have two or three trucks, and then a couple of buses churning there, it's going to be really a messy.
That's what the traffic study determined, and they determined there was not a negative impact. They, this is what the, this large form did, this whole package here, and this gentleman here went through that, hours through that, and determined that was not going to be a negative impact as a result. Back to your percentage, go ahead, your percentage of green?
63%. I mean, with, if we move the sidewalk now interior of the site, if we count that against us, I'll have to recalculate it. We will, if we're making that, we're making that change that we just discussed, so I'll update the percentages.
But it's.
63, that must include the stuff in the back?
Yeah, yeah, we include all our parts. So anything that's owned by the applicant is part of the overall parcel of green space. But, yeah, now that we're going to move the sidewalk closer to our payment area, that's getting into the parcel now, we'll count that against us, obviously. So we'll, we'll update that percentage.
I think there's a point of confusion.
Okay, go ahead, Ari.
What they're talking about is, right now they're at 63%. It'll stay at 63% because the land that the state would be taking does not belong to this parcel, it belongs to the state. Now, if they're, if they're moving the sidewalk in, yes, that's going to reduce the 63%. He said he would recalculate that when he does, does the work for the new sidewalk location.
Are you saying 53%?
63.
Jamie, is that your green space or your lot coverage?
Oh, lot coverage. Sorry, I thought that's what we're talking about. We're at 63% lot coverage.
So your percentage of green space then is 37%.
And we are allowed to go down to 20.
Moving the sidewalk's not going to come anywhere close to 37%.
No, I think we'll, we'll still be under the sidewalk.
So putting that in the other direction is 37% green space.
It does look 37%.
Pardon?
It does not look 37%.
They hide it behind that.
Well, the property in the back is also counted in that.
And that's, the town's engineers would verify those numbers. It's been reviewed by the town's engineer. So if there was a question on something like that, that would throw up a red flag.
Do you have access to, like, do public people have access to that there or do you have to be a customer?
It's the septic, it's the septic system.
It's a septic system. It's not really something you'd like to be walking on.
All the green space is septic?
Yes, it is.
It's like your yard.
And that's, that's not just for one thing, that's both the state usage.
Is it what?
And we're required to, developers are required to maintain 20%. They're maintaining 37%.
And also, it's, there's also land set aside for a future septic as well. So not all that land will be a septic, correct?
Oh, correct. It's, it's actually a lot smaller than we originally anticipated because we're going to have to, one of your questions was about the groundwater. We're going to have to do elevated sand.
Oh, you are there.
Yeah, and so that actually shrunk the size.
2.5 and 1.5 feet down to the water table, so you're trying to elevate it on.
Yeah, and the gentleman that designs our septic systems, he's actually the Schumont County and Tyler County engineer for the new septic systems. Actually, my staff is on all Schumont system. So we take that very seriously.
Al, do you have more traffic discussion for David?
No, I think, I think we're shot for David.
Thank you, David. Okay, we're going to let it go.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, David.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, David.
All right, so, so let's, let's talk about the circulation on the site while we're talking about traffic, as I said earlier. Any questions, board members? I have them. Deb?
Yeah, I still, I do not see any compelling reason to have truck parking at that site. On the dandymart sites that I looked at, my friend on Google Earth and I are doing a lot of looking, and there are not many places that have parking for four trucks except for those that are next to I-86 or some other major highway. And I don't see us as having that need for trucks to park kind of in the center of Lansing.
So Deb, I would say that a couple of things to keep in mind is that the long, let's set up as long truck parking there, that one of the other or two of the uses for that would potentially be people with RVs or people with boats.
Ah, the boats, yeah.
We potentially anticipate both of those things in our town. And I would think that the truckers that are coming through that are going in there for, other than fuel, they're not going to go through the drive-through.
Right.
So, you know, they're going to be parking there going to get food or they want to go in.
Grab a sub or coffee to go. They're going to slide in there, park, run in, get the coffee or whatever they need, and then slide out and get it.
If I may, when I was looking at this, I compared it with the Orvito on the corner.
Yeah.
And they've got about the same amount of space. And I think that to, not to expect a truck driver to want to get a cup of coffee or a sandwich is disingenuous. I don't think, personally, I don't think it's that much compared with existing uses in the town. I don't think it's that much, or it's not in excess.
Also, I believe that, I don't have it with me, but the truck percentage on 34 is in the range of 5 or 6%.
Yeah.
So you do have a good number of heavy vehicles. I guess, I guess the terminology should use heavy vehicles, including cambers and longer trailers and trailers and such.
Okay, so, anything else on that site?
I do, I do see the truck path for fuel and parking from east entrance shows a loop through there.
Which, which page are you on?
C-17, the upper left.
Actually, let's look up there. So, let me give you a little background on what you're actually seeing. It might be a little harder to understand. So the lines, the solid lines are actually the tire tracks. And then if you ever see a little dash line, that's actually the.
The bump up.
Yeah. So that gives you an idea of exactly how things are.
Can you switch over to the one to the left?
Left, yeah.
There we go. It shows the loop.
Yeah, we just did that just to show.
So is that the truck and trailer group?
Yeah, yeah, that would work. Not that we're going to recommend that to anyone, but we wanted to show you every option. I mean, I was kind of surprised we had like two pages of this. Usually we don't give you guys all this information, but it's, it gets you an idea of, my designer wanted to double-check the different potentials. So this is actually.
That's important, that obviously that they get in, that they can get out.
Yeah. And that's one of the other reasons why the diesel fuel line is where it's located. So this is showing that, okay, someone doesn't understand that they can go up to the other entrance and make a right, that he's going to want to go in and out the same way.
Yeah, you pushed him as tight as possible to the left, so, and he can still make it.
He can make it.
He can make it. Without having to back or reverse. So this is a smooth turning. I mean, you've still got a little bit more room if you had to do some of that jacking around them. What our diagrams show is, is smooth driving, no reverse, always going forward. So this is the truck coming in, going northbound, taking a left turn into our site, going to the fuel island, the tightest fuel island, by the way. We'd have a little more room if he went up here. Tightest fuel island, then back around. Now hopefully those ED cars aren't, my Ford Lightning that has a little extra bumper on it. But, and then they come back out.
And the traffic study showed no problems in the driveways as far as ingress egress and the turns, correct?
No, we have, we have a little bit of room to, so like you see here, there's a little more gap here. We showed worst-case scenario if he swung out a little bit more, just to see how that would line. But you have another couple of feet in here to play.
And do you, do you anticipate that the light would probably have, if and when, if this is viable, that the light would have to be changed, synchronized with the DOT with potential traffic that's backed up, you know, in the morning on one way or the evening the other way as far as getting trucks out of them, having time to get out?
Yeah, so what will happen is DOT will optimize the signal based on, on the traffic study. All that is, is go into the box and reprogram it. It's not a huge task, it's actually something we can't do, it's the DOT. But what they'll do is then, they'll watch that or, you know, give it a little time to get the, the site stabilized, you know. When the site's first used, it's, it's basically, the first week or two, anyone saw down the corner, this KFC opened up and there was traffic, glory. Once it's stabilized, the traffic is set and the patterns are created, what DOT will do is they'll come out and check it out. And they'll, and they'll, they'll check, and then they'll, they'll be able to adjust the timing. They can make the cycle length anywhere from 60 seconds to two minutes and add more green time to the right turn, you know, the green time period, sorry, not right turn green, but green time to the right as you go, go towards Auburn. They can make those adjustments as needed. And that's what they'll do. They have, there's a specific guy in each region, that's, that's his job is to focus on the traffic. That's why, if you haven't noticed, they're trying to go to roundabouts more than anything because they don't want to deal with that anymore.
They work better too.
And they do.
Hold on, what?
It's a question.
It's a question, all right, go ahead.
I don't know, can I step up there, like, to something on the screen with my question?
Yeah, which sheet do you want? I want to.
I'd like to see my house, actually, where you have your nice little truck lines. So it needs to go up. So your little truck lines are joined right into my house. So right here's my home. And how are we going to mitigate this coming into my house with 92 vehicles pointing directly at my house?
And lights at night?
And lights and sound and traffic trucks accelerating and decelerating. They are very loud when they stop and start again. So mitigation to surrounding residents would be appreciated.
No, I believe that you were, the two of you were going to get together.
We have not come to anything. We had one meeting. They have not reproached me again and nothing's been discussed and nothing is invited.
John, you were going to kind of, weren't you, or the board, someone, CJ, were going to try and facilitate the meeting between the two of them?
Well, the two met, Al, but nothing came about.
Yeah.
So, Guy, where do you want to sit with that?
I've been waiting for this process to get going again, in all honesty. We have, we've been working on this drawing for the better part of 12 months and it, we really haven't been here since summer. And I was waiting to get through the traffic impact study and to get this going to hopefully conditional approval. And I will pick up and have another conversation. We looked into the options based on our call that we had because there's an elevation difference in our property embers. And we looked in, Jamie had one of his summer interns do a lot of research for us on soundproof, sound deadening fences that are viable as an option to mitigate the impact of light. And I believe a six-foot fence with the change in elevation will knock down any headlights.
And the elevation from my kitchen window is higher than six feet from the ground, so I can look over the fence and down onto your property. I bent on a ladder, I measured it, so a six-foot fence will not be sufficient. So there is a.
We'll pick the conversation back up, but at the end of the day, you know, we're willing to do something reasonable and we'll provide an allowance and allow her to do what she feels is best to mitigate that impact.
I think that's, that's pretty much all the board can do in something this situation, correct, John? Just try to get the two parties to work it out.
That's one option. I mean, the board really can require, I don't think, off-site improvements, so it's, you know, the applicant is, is willing to work with the, with the neighbor to some extent.
Is there any possibility of moving the position of the driveway just north?
Do you want your turn light?
Huh?
If you want your turn light, no.
So they moved driveways as far as.
That way intentionally.
I see.
And also, there was a recommendation of DOT saying they wanted it on the extreme end of the lot, so.
Remember that number, the 450 number?
Yep.
We're at 420.
Okay.
So DOT said that's, that's, you know, that's what they wanted.
If they end up with a northbound right-hand turn lane, that means the regular lanes have to shift over to the west. And you want that turn lane to be as long as possible.
Back to the lights, the best that we can offer the board is that hopefully the two parties can get together and work something out, I believe, correct, John? There's not much.
We had, we had, there was one meeting between the applicant and the, and the neighbor, and, and there was multiple options discussed, so let's, let's see what happens.
Okay.
You know, from what I recall, many months now, we've talked about different types of fencing, different heights of fencing, whether it be soundproof, whether it would be completely solid to block the lighting. At one point, Danny offered to just give the neighbor a sum of money to figure out what they wanted to do themselves, so let's just, okay, let's see where it goes.
Okay. Ultimately, Danny would not be building the fence?
No.
For the neighbor?
I would be providing an allocation of funds. Yeah, I would not want to get involved in construction, the construction project.
Right.
That I didn't control.
Communicating the information from the people that you sent out, the results that they brought back to you.
No, I have, I have not.
There's been one meeting.
That's, that's on me, that, I was really honestly, guys, I was waiting for this project to pick back up and get moving here again. That's, that still remains an open action item on my list, and I will take care of it.
Yeah, it just seems to me if you can pass those conclusions on, if they especially have any specifics on, you know, the brands or manufacturers for those, they get passed on to the neighbor so that she can talk to some contractors and see what her costs are going to be, make those along.
Yeah, we, like Dwight said, I had a very go-getter summer intern who really relished looking at the patterns. She did that.
Okay, so the, the, the traffic study did not throw up any red flags, we tossed it around, then no more. More questions, board members, were there any that, correct?
Oh, Bill, I got to have another one on the internal traffic patterns.
Which, which page do you want to see?
I'm in my head right now. But in terms of the drive-through window, because you don't know how to do this, you've not done this successfully, are you going to have any kind of an evaluation system in place so you can say, whoops, wait a minute, we've got to make sure to train people to do this, we got to make sure that we train people that they can't do that?
We won't start it till we know we can run it. So we'll have the right systems, the right people.
And how do you determine the right systems and right people?
There are companies out there that all they do is operate and train on drive-throughs.
Okay.
If, if they delay somebody, they'll let them know.
And I would know, I want to confirm for, for us and for everybody else, the comments that the traffic study engineer made on the drive-through were based on actual drive-through activities that are already ongoing someplace else.
Oh, yeah. For coffee and doughnuts.
The ten points of, of.
Right.
So just, just to give you a little bit of an idea of storage, just within our curb island areas, that's seven vehicles.
Is it really right in there or so?
Yeah, that's seven vehicles. Now, look at, now, let's, let's make sure that we understand this, this, that's our entrance to our, our drive-through. So if this started backing up, you're talking about, there's, there's probably room to stack 21 vehicles in there. It's, it's a, it's a lot of room. I've done a lot of Dunkin' Donuts. We don't have that much backing on Dunkin' Donuts, I might tell you that right now. There, there are 10 pounds of building up, five pound bag. We have lots of room there.
Okay, all right. I think we're good for, we're good for traffic then. Let's, one thing that, that I have a question on is the signage by the entrances. That appeared to be awful high to me from the sketches. What's, is that going to, is that going to cause a visibility, a sight problem?
Let me pull it up.
There's a setback to what a lot of the line of study. Vehicle staging to exit the site.
So, the visualization.
So, the visualization...
I'm sorry. I'm not flipping the, the pad, I'm just going to house.
Yeah, that looks close in the picture.
So, that is closer to the road than, this visualization is closer to the road. This was the worst case scenario, it was kind of where we broke. So that, that visual, that's still in the plans right now, but you're going to have to go before the zoning board for approval, is that correct? Right, yeah, definitely. So just, kind of, just so we can see where it is on the site plan itself, we have it on the back side of the sidewalk. So you can see one here, and one here. So, correct.
Okay.
There's nothing here anymore. That was a mistake on my part. So that's that part, if you can see where the stop bar is? Yep. So that, that your site triangles, that's one of the things that DOT looks at, what they call site triangles, so you can... So they will, they will take into consideration the sign there, the DOT will look at that as well. And if it's too, if it doesn't cover, they'll ask you to reduce it or change it, revise it. Or move it back into the sign. That's what they typically say. So this, this is your visualization of it, not exactly where, location wise, but we can see what it actually looks like there.
All right, anyone questions on the exit signs? Well, the, you know, one of the, one of the things is the visualizations are tough to work with because of, the, you know, the scale is really on, you know, from the, from the visualizations we've got here, it looks like the, a couple of the signs fills the entire space between the edge of the road and the edge of your pavement.
We know that's not.
And we know that's not right. But I think, just so that we're all clear, it is correct, John, if they'll have to go for a variance?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. We ran out of any more than two signs, I think, on the site.
That includes the signs on the building?
Yes.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, let's move to the, uh, let's move to the, you, you had a public meeting and you summarized some of the comments, I guess there was 26 of them, and you did a response. You want to expand on any of those responses? And board members, do you have any follow-up questions as a result of the applicant's remarks? So that's on page, uh, let me look, 15 and...
This stuff?
Yeah.
Before we move on, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, do you anticipate a vehicle traveling west on 34, 34B, coming down from Maravato down towards Dandy Mark? To turn into Dandy Mark, do you anticipate that they will turn left at Rose Harbor and then turn right to the Dandy Mark parking lot? Or do you think they will continue down through the traffic light and turn in left from 34B? That didn't seem to be in the pictures there with them.
I think, I think that you, my personal opinion, if you look at that intersection and the traffic signals there now, I think that people level one will figure it out. And number, number two, there is a left turn arrow. So me personally, I would turn left onto 34, and then I would turn right to go in. I did see in the traffic study that one of the things that they said in the future might happen, um, would be a, between Cowan Road and 34, um, between those two intersections, that there would potentially be a left-hand turn there. So I interpreted that to mean the center of the roadway, there would be a place where going either direction, you could turn left.
I was just thinking of, of a tractor trailer coming down, heading west, and wanting to turn in.
I think people will figure that.
You know, and going across all the traffic that's waiting there, coming up.
But the, the independent study that was done, he took into all consider, you know, what are, what are the different options or scenarios? And all that was taken into consideration when they did this or they did that. And then, and then he came up with a conclusion that nothing, none of those scenarios actually threw up a red flag. Might say, say that?
Yeah, I was, it was just that the, on the designs on this, uh, things where it was showing the traffic through, it didn't show the scenario of somebody coming in, uh, from the east and then turning and...
I think the most likely...
I agree, they'll figure it out, but I'm just, you know, it's either, if you're a tractor trailer driver, I don't know that you'd want to turn left and then turn, to turn right into...
Yeah, I think if you're, if you're a tractor trailer driver, they're going to go through the intersection and they're going to come in the, the western entrance, because that's a much easier access.
For that, right.
If you're a passenger vehicle, uh, I would say most people gravitate towards the direction that they're traveling.
Right.
So if you're going to make a left at the light, you're probably going to make a left at the light. If you're going straight through the light, you're probably going straight through it. That's how most people think.
Right.
Especially when you're, you're traveling, when you're driving.
But also the destination, probably majority of the trucks that would use this is the salt. And they're going to go pick up the salt, so they can always, they don't have to get gas on the way into the salt, they can get gas after they fill up, which would be an easier in and out of it. So they're, they will, they will do what is best for them to avoid any, um, delays or, you know, intersection hazards, problems, whatever. So like, uh, we said, it, they'll figure it out, I think.
Yeah, you gotta keep in mind that they have C E L licenses and safety is very important for them, so that those licenses remain intact.
Okay, so let's get, let's get going on, we have a lot to go over, I don't know if we'll get you all but tonight, but let's touch base real quickly on those, um, those, um, those responses. Did you want to expand on any of those at all? So what we did there is we, um, so, once again, great, great summer intern, summarized every comment from your seat, uh, from the public area, if you watched the public area. And we categorized, um, the, the comment type and then our response. So a lot of, as you recalled, there were a lot of comments that were repetitive, so we just referred back to them. So all our responses are, are in this comment matrix that we provided. And if you want any specific ones or vetted questions about our responses, you want to have your question. So now, board members, is there any of these comment, there are responses that you'd like a more detailed explanation on? Did you get a chance to look through those? Now, some of these, um, some of the concerns or comments by the public will be, uh, will deal with once we go through the part two and part three. They will appear as part of, you know, these questions. So I don't know if we need to touch base on every one or even portions of some, but go ahead. Any, anything stand out? Not for this time. We might, we'll remember, we have to go... What's that, I'm sorry?
We have, so it's, oh, we got the...
Yeah, a little more, yeah. Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's move on. And then I, I didn't get a chance to see this, but, um, there has been, um, some response to, I guess this was the engineering question. So I'll go over this real quickly for the public, if they don't have a chance to see it.
Is this the Fagan?
Yeah, this is the, this is the response, it's in red, that we got today.
Oh, is that the additional question you did?
Yeah, you want to do the Fagan, I guess maybe we should do the Fagan first, or we want to do this. Let's, let's go ahead and do this while I get it right here. So, uh, there was a question on the propane, and you're saying that that will be located under the island, that's correct?
See that on the drawing, you know?
And then, um, you want to just talk real quickly about the EV stations? Yeah, we're, um, we have five stations shown. Originally, we showed four. We're going to keep them all together, except we have a couple next to the building. Um, it just seems to be better from a infrastructure point of view. So we put the five chargers in there, you can see it on screen now. Okay. Um, and the next one, we've already talked about, the staging area, that already came up. Um, this is one that I think, um, I think all of us are pretty happy that you decided, um, it's about the sound system. You're not going to have any outside music or speakers. And that's it.
And they're feeling...
It says, "We'll not install an outside sound system in place of our dispensary." We'll have media that are played with feeling only volume. Right, so there, at one time, you were talking about having speakers and music going most of the time, that's not going to be there.
Right, right, that will not be.
And then you're going to, you may, you may have some speakers on your pumps, but you're saying that that, that has a volume control. So if there's volume that drifts off-site, if there is complaints, you will be receptive to those complaints, right? Now, we don't have a noise ordinance in the town, so we really don't have a legal footing, I think, anyone here, but you're, you are, as a good neighbor, you're willing to be receptive if the code officer comes in and has, says the complaints, that you'll try to work it out. Is that correct?
We will absolutely lock the volume on that if it is included.
Okay, board members, any questions? Is there anything else? I'll just have a page. Um, I guess a phase one, phase two, you want to talk about that at all? Oh, the E S I. Yeah. So, so we had, uh, phase one and phase two have been performed on the site. Um, there are some, what we call areas of interest, A O Is, those will be handled as part of the redevelopment of the site. We have had conversations with D E C and all of the... So, um, basically, any mitigation we got here, what we're doing now is, is reperformance with D E C. So once we find something as an engineering term, we have to report it to D E C, if it's not something we can, yeah, look away from. So that has been, uh, discussed directly with D E C. Okay, and then the next...
We haven't put a shovel on the ground yet, so we have to...
No, so what we'll have to do is a, a simple site management plan. Um, when we start cleaning up and if we find stuff that's, that has a smell or an odor to it, we're pretty much going to have to segregate that. And then one of my environmental technicians will come up, test it, and if it's deemed necessary, it will be transported off-site to a certified disposal area. It depends, I have different levels, some different things, but, you know, that basically we have to follow, follow the D E C rules and...
And there's been a conversation that if we find anything about them allowing us to leave it onsite as well.
Yeah.
You know, we've got areas and re-portioned property, obviously, that need significant amounts of fill. So, but again, we don't expect a large impact based on, you know, what the phase one and the phase two show. But we do expect some.
It's probably officially used to termination, so it's part of that D E C conversation. About the D E C. Okay. Next, um, we talked about that, you're doing a mound system for the sub system in the back mound, correct? And that's, you're going to have to go through, uh, Tocquees County Department of Health for that, I guess. I don't think the state has any... No, we're under, uh, so if you stay under the thousand gallons per day, you don't have to go to the state. And then this is one that I, I don't remember seeing. I don't remember seeing a subdivision with the, the lot lines of existing lots and how it's going to be split in the tax net numbers. John, do we, we don't have that, do we?
We do now.
Oh, we do?
Right, probably.
We got so much stuff there. I'm sorry. So that's from, I can't remember the date on that. So is it due? Yeah.
I couldn't find it in my records.
So it is added in this package that you gave us? Yes, just in case, I said, we're... So our license lines are, is that...
It was, it's a single sheet, it was paper clipped to this most recent site plan, right underneath.
Yeah, we'll never...
Did that suffer from live run? This is for rare instances.
Oh, paper noise. Oh.
Which sheet is it? Oh, yeah. Subdivision there, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that a second sheet? Yeah. That was clipped, that was clipped for this. Yeah, but I, I, that's the most recent submission. I thought we submitted back in June, and that's what says in my records, but I don't think either of us can find it, so just in case there is. Um, it's a version of the lot lines, it's basically what we've seen, it's right there. But, um, that's... So there's, so there's one, the parcel to the west is going to be split, right? You're only taking part of that parcel, correct, to the southwest? The little piece down here? The little... Down here? Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that one's, so you've got two pieces that are going to be split, correct? You're only taking a portion of it. Correct. And then the other ones, you're taking the entire, there's one, two, three? Three parcels, it's the whole parcel. And then part of it is you're going to be consolidating the two portions in the three hole into one, it's, what was it, 4.7 acres? Yeah, 4.7 acres. Okay, all right. Any questions, board members on this? Okay, so that sheets, we touched base on that sheet. There was a lot of questions from the town's engineer. Uh, did you want to expand on any of those at all? Sorry about ruffling, Joe, we've just got too much paper here. I noticed you've changed the trees to guess, there was a request for the type of tree, size of tree? Yeah, pretty much we, I don't think there's anything that we disagree at all with the review counts, so we just comply with all the counts. So what we have in front of you is, um, comment response, comment response, you know, pretty much going, going through the items. Um, subsequently, like the crystal stream, so one of the big pieces to this is the stormwater manager plan, or SWAP, actually. Um, at the time you were waiting, of course, everyone finds about COVID, there's a, there's a specific typing unit that we use for water quality, where we're waiting for the plan of design of that. So that was one of the questions, is hey, I was going to finalize, and since then, that's my computer. Um... So, yeah, that's, the, the outflows through, to the stream? Crystal stream. So that's our unit, that we're not, so this is all being infiltrated onsite. No water's going offsite of, of the, the developed area. It's all, it'll just perk down through, that's the whole concept here. Yeah, I mean, we're going to put so much grab under this parcel. I mean, if you recall the Brady playing, that back end, the western edge is, is pretty much a big infiltration area.
So crystal stream is just like hydro...
Yes, exactly. Um, it's, it's, it's actual, um, because this is considered a hotspot under D E C rules, we have to do like, elevate water quality, um, mitigation. And that's the crystal stream in it. And it's proprietary system, D E C only allows, I think there's only like three or four different types of systems that are allowed, so it's, it's pretty standard, that's the state.
Yeah, so do they need to remove solids and volatile, uh, volatile organic compounds because...
What happens to the volatile organic compounds?
That's not my, uh, piece, but the, the...
Or the non, I could...
Actual unit, the actual unit collects all that inside it, and that actual unit has to be maintained through a service agreement.
I was going to say, we have to have, we have an ongoing service and maintenance process where we monitor the levels of products that may be captured, uh, and then we have to deal with them appropriately.
So, so they have to have a service agreement to do that too? It's something that the D E C requires, I would assume.
It's gotta be cleaned and maintained.
Thank you. Just, just like my septic system.
Well, that's pretty much a pump truck comes over. I don't, I don't know where, it usually goes to a wastewater facility, I don't know what it is here.
Okay, Lord, anything else on the engineers with questions? Anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, question?
Um, I ask, is, does this meet the definition for the zoning of a mini-mart? Are they advertising it as a mini-mart? Is it a mini-mart? Or is that just the name of it? Because our zoning is kind of specific that it has to be pretty small in order to be called a mini-mart.
The prior use of this was a convenience store, the proposed use is a convenience store, and a convenience store is a legal use of the site.
But they're calling themselves a mini-mart, so I just wondered if they're legally allowed to call themselves a mini-mart.
We, we have, there's, there's hopes up here.
That's, that's a corporate name.
That is, that is no way to vary your legalities.
It's a corporation.
Yeah, okay. Um, let's, all right, so if we have no other questions, let's move on. What I think tonight, let's just go through the environmental assessment form, if there are any questions there, and tell me if this is okay for you guys. And then the next meeting, we will do the, um, we will do the Part Two and Part Three, is that correct, John?
Yep.
And the potential, and then there'll be a vote at the next meeting, I'm anticipating, correct?
Uh, that depends on how well we make out with the Part Two and Three.
Right, if everything goes through. So, a vote on the seeker, not on the, not on the project.
Yeah, well, we're open to be voted.
Yeah, we may, we may incorporate the seeker in the project vote, only the one vote, is that correct, John?
That that's a possibility, if this board wants to do that, yes.
I think it becomes a vote, we're trying on that. Okay, all right. So, let's, like I said, let's go through this form real quickly, there's a few things that, that I highlighted and I made you write us, but let's just touch base on that. And then anything else that comes up, um, we can discuss, but let's, let's go through this real quick. Um, it said adopted land use plan C2, it's on page twenty-seven. Um, it's answered no here, but we do have a con plan, so I didn't understand that. Page twenty-seven, I guess that's what I have.
Page two of thirteen.
Yeah, page two of the document.
Okay, sorry.
No, I don't know if it's...
Page two, I see. Yeah, okay. Okay, sorry about that.
No, it's C2.
Yeah, I see where you're going.
And so that should be a yes there, I believe, correct, board members? Um, it says, "Will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan local law or ordinance?" We're not asking for any amendments to the ordinance, the only variance they're asking for is board zoning. Right, right, that's, that's C1, we're talking about C2, we're down the next one. There is a con plan.
Yeah, I'd say that's a yes.
Yeah, that's the, a yes.
Okay. And, um, and then, uh, C2B, there is a, there's a, what's it called, scenic byway? So that's a yes as well, correct?
Yes.
That should fall into that, that should be a scenic byway, just the name's a claim on it. And, and by the way, the scenic, John, the scenic byway did send a letter, correct?
That's right. You have a saying?
And they said...
That this is an appropriate use for that site.
So, scenic byway said it was an appropriate use. Um, let's see, anything else? I didn't see, board, we glanced through this zoning, anything, we touched base on that. Let's kind of go with the gentleman. Um, development acreage, I think everything else looked okay to me on that.
Uh, let's see, and this gets into, we go to page four, let's see, that is under D1G, number of structures, one, so that's obviously the building and not the islands. Um, it gives the largest proposed structure building height of eighteen feet, assuming that's at the highest point of hanging of parapet, features would be eighteen feet. What, um, height dimension are we looking at for the islands?
Usually this is only, either a wall or...
Right, but I didn't see, I didn't see heights on the print for, for the islands, you can maybe tell me which sheet I can find those on.
Are you, are you saying, Dean, that should also include the island, so it's not just one structure?
No, not necessarily, but I didn't hear that question.
Oh, you're just curious?
Eighteen feet to the, I'm not, uh, the parapet?
Parapet.
Yeah, that's eighteen foot to the parapet, the, the entrance piece is a little higher.
Okay, well, we're gonna wanna know what the highest point is there. And I'm assuming that we can find elevations with dimensions on there somewhere, if you could direct me to which sheet, that would be helpful. For, you know, what, what might be the islands.
I don't think it's on my...
So we, we can move on, but that, that's something that I feel we want.
Okay, folks, it's on V2, anything, I didn't see anything, anyone else? Um, working our way through that, since we're out, maybe everything looks good.
Page seven, item K there, the second to last item. So it says, "Will proposed action for commercial or industrial projects only generate new or additional demand for energy?" Obviously, yes, that's what's checked, but it says, "If yes, estimate annual electric demand during operation," but the proposed action is left one out. So we're gonna need to have a, a number there for how much energy usage. And then the top of the next page, page E.
Well, that, that, just real quickly, just above that on, let's see, the Roman numeral VI, it says, "Action for hybrid or electric," and you are gonna do that, I think that should be yes.
That's true. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh, let's see, so I guess it's item M at the top of the next page, it says, "Proposed action, will the proposed action produce noise if we see existing hand-meup noise levels during construction, operation, or both?" My assumption is during construction, you're gonna have heavy equipment in there, you're gonna have backup alarms, and that's gonna be louder than the current hand-meup noise. So I would say yes, and then it says, "Provide details, including sources, time of day and duration," and I'm assuming that it's not gonna be five AM to eleven PM like your normal operations, it would be two to seven AM.
Yeah, we have...
Seven to seven? Seven to seven, you've already got that, so I just put seven to seven there.
I would guess, I would say heavy equipment operation.
Yeah, seven to seven is your requirements, right?
Yeah, I think that, what do you have on the priority?
It's already listed, under L.
Sorry, is that the sound?
Yes. And, um, and then this one on P, it's on page eight, P, is that propane tank in here? Did you add that on this one?
They're not listed, these are two one-thousand gallon tanks.
Yeah, they're under one, a hundred.
Well, it says combined capacity.
Yeah, that's kind of, um, yeah, it's a gray area. The reason why you do that is so you don't have to register, then, let's talk about registration. Well, we can, we'll add them, it doesn't hurt.
All right, anything else? I didn't see anything else until page ten. I think we discussed this already, it's item H, it should stick in the last box here, potential contamination here, history.
All this was done before the Phase Two was completed, so...
So, assuming that you've had to...
Question?
You've had to go to DUC directly, and they've had to look at their, their records and respond to you with their...
To be honest, this is not a reported spill though. Let me, let me ask my...
Yes, they opened this, I told you, one day.
Wasn't that from across the street though? Yeah.
Well, I came from across the street, but when we notified them because of the Phase Two.
So, assuming that anything that you received from DUC regarding any of these types of issues, containment history, the contamination history that you have forwarded that to the town?
It actually joins a problem, I'm sorry, that, there's the terminology issue.
So there's, the state says the contamination came from the old gas station across the street?
That's what our early indications are at.
From the Egan's?
Old gas station, where the hotel was.
The brewery was, where the gas, the brewery was.
Wow. That's old.
Yeah.
That's old.
Yes, it is.
Remember the techy coast. I started working in...
They all, I can remember it, I don't know what's the matter with the rest of it. So, as I, as I mentioned in my email, our purpose is, is, and will supply the, the Phase One, Phase Two, to, to the town, but, you know, it's proprietary, we'd rather not be out there until DUC goes through all their process and let them do the whole...
At the appropriate time, it should be in our records.
Yes, yeah, we don't have a shared, we don't have, um, the web until it's ever viewed and documented with DUC. That's what our purpose is.
But obviously, John, we wanna make sure that any correspondence with the DUC, any response from the DUC that they get, is forwarded to us so we can forward it to our engineering community.
I didn't see anything else, I don't know if you guys, I'm, I'm already on E, page twelve and thirteen.
I've got one on thirteen, maybe I have eleven.
Eleven, go ahead then.
Uh, let's see, uh, E2 on page eleven, map of resources under near the site. Uh, what is the average depth of the bedrock on the site? It says not applicable, but then in B you say that there's two, point two percent of bedrock outcroppings on the site. So, I mean, if you've got outcroppings, then, um, bedrock is pretty close to the surface, poking out in some spots, so I think it isn't applicable. Um, and maybe you can't answer that because, yeah, we're showing...
Well, we've actually done some geotack already, so we can answer that now, subsequently since this has been done, so...
Okay. The place is not too far away where the bedrock is less than four feet down, and I'd say, I think the average is around six to eight.
Yeah, we'll, we'll update that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all right, so, let's see, Larry, you had one?
Uh, page thirteen. Uh, we're at list the, uh, the item H, project site within five miles of any officially designated, and they've listed, again, it's called State Park, which is true because you lay the circle and that's there, but this has also been designated a scenic byway, Route thirty-four and thirty-four B.
Yeah, that should go in under two, II, it says State Park, and it says scenic byway, so you're right, Larry, you should just go, what's the name of the scenic byway, what's it? Does it go...
Is it...
Is it...
Is it...
Is it...
Is it...
Yes, okay.
But it says local as well, so...
So we've got...
If you identify a resource, you would think that you would put, um, Littleville Falls...
Myers Park.
Myers Park.
Myers Park.
And then one other quick one, go back to page twelve if you would, it's just missing on Norwalks on E3B.
Yeah, it's not marked at all.
It's not marked, just put it down in there, it's not on here.
The one I got is marked, no.
Yeah.
Mine's blank.
The agricultural lands on mine aren't marked, no.
That's what we're talking about.
No, they, he was talking about landmark, wasn't he?
No, agriculture.
Oh, ag, oh, damn.
Okay, so, we finished, hold on, yeah, we got a question, we finished up, um, we finished this up, and I guess, all right, let's, it's a question, correct? I have a comment, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's about the comments that were made, there was like, a dozen people, I think, that mentioned the position of the building, and in the comments it just says that the decision to remain caca, right, diagonal, uh, was moved by the board and staff, but it doesn't provide any rationale for any, um, is the public proofing to that information? Can we get an explanation about how this fits?
Well, I'm not just...
The architectural, because all the other buildings and lancing face the road, so...
So this started like, a year ago, and they proposed, we've looked at different scenarios in the past, we looked at it close to the road, we looked at it further back, and after looking at different scenarios, this seemed to be the most appropriate design for the project, because close to the road, there was a problem with site distance on the turning, further back from the site, there was a problem with pedestrians crossing the traffic, the use of the building. Also, by putting it on an angle, it allowed them to have two islands as opposed to one large island. We thought the visual of two smaller island, islands was better than the visual of one large island.
There was one additional thing too.
Go ahead.
Placement of the building, uh, at an angle like this affords the property for the, affords the opportunity for the larger green space in front. If that had been squared off, it would be practically nothing.
We might lose that green space anyway, but my question was, what is, what is the justification of this?
Excuse me, comment, you're not gonna lose the green space. It might be, it might be reduced by up to sixteen feet, according to the state specifications that we have available.
In what ways does this building match that architecture of the existing buildings in the way that it is required to, has to match the architecture within reason? It doesn't...
Okay, I don't, I don't wanna get into, into a debate here, but the, the proposal, the build, the building came to us originally very generic, the developer was very receptive, matched the stone and the brickwork of the building next door, and we did, we did send it out to, can you expand on, is it Shipos?
You're thinking of Parks and Historic Preservation, yeah, it used to be known as Shipoh, and to, to see if it would, if there would be an impact to Rhodes Harbor, and Shipoh had a letter of no impact to Rhodes Harbor.
So we, your concerns, we did address your concerns the best we could. Fellas, anything else you wanna expand on there?
Well, they did change the design of the, uh, covers for the islands too, as well. They went from a, went from a vertical, plastic, red and white front to a pitched mansard shingle roof.
And there will be no signage, no strapping, very, very plain, not, not something that's gonna be in your face, they're very receptive with that. All right, so let's, uh, let's, uh, so I think we pretty well, any other questions, board members, that we've, we've gone over, anybody?
Well, one of the things that, um, we see on the plan, well, two, two things, one is you mentioned that there will need to be a gate in the fence for access to the septic area, so that'll, that'll need to be shown on a future print. And then, um, the light holes, twenty-five foot light holes, or twenty foot, that's substantially higher than what we're, we're willing to accept. Um, I know that when we looked at some similar projects for the Dollar General, they also had very tall light poles.
What was your final approval?
Um, I'm gonna ask John to take a look back in our records and find out what that is and send that information to you. Like, yeah, twenty-five feet is, is much higher than what we're... Like, yeah, twenty-five feet is much higher than we want to accept for the light poles.
Okay, so I guess the next... John, is there anything else that's outstanding you could think of?
Well, you made it through the comments. You made it through the traffic impact study and you've gone through the, um, part one secret.
And some of the concerns that the public had will be intertwined as we answer the questions for part two.
So, that's your next step is to begin reviewing part two of the P D A F. With that, I encourage you to maybe start taking a look at D E C's secret handbook, which, you know, has pretty in-depth answers as to what some of the thresholds for those questions are. Because the questions can seem kind of ambiguous when you read them. But they're really not met in that way. So, D E C has some good guidance on their website. As a matter of fact, I'll forward you post the link tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
And they've got some pretty decent thresholds on there to work through the questions.
One other thing I forgot to mention. We have been accepting written comments. I will, I'm going to cut that off at this Friday, I think. What is that, the second? The end business on the second?
Yes.
So, any other comments that you'd like to make, we will receive and they will be posted on the website. After Friday, they will not be included as part of this development project, okay? So, I think, other than that, I think we're pretty well set for tonight. Joe, did you want to do a presentation?
I can do that. I just wanted to ask, if they're going to submit a new design with the same sidewalk, are you saying the public can't comment on that?
Well, I don't... What do you... We were just talking about moving. It's not a major item.
It's not. We can leave it where it is. Which already is wanted.
You're going to change the design to some degree and then not let the public comment on that change?
We can't, we can't, we won't change it.
We'll leave it alone.
They won't change it, Joe.
I'm just saying, John...
Hold on, wait a minute, hold on. Alright, so, we wanted to close out public comment to get moved this long, whether to vote whether yes or no on this. And I don't think that the relocation of the sidewalk is enough to cause a major change. What do you... John, and you? What's your comment?
I mean, the idea behind public comment isn't whether or not the public likes or dislikes a design. It's whether or not there's some sort of information that the public, unique, they live there, such as the neighbor who lives across the street who points out that the lights are going to go into driveway. That's unique information that you may not have if you weren't... That the board may not have if a member of the public couldn't comment on it. But the location of the sidewalk, I think, you know, to my mind, it doesn't rise to the point of having a public hearing. It's not the overall size of the building, the disposition of the building. It's the movement of the sidewalk a couple of feet laterally. Ultimately, it's your decision whether or not you want to have a public hearing about that. Note that if you do decide to have a public hearing, you can't limit it to a specific topic. It's a public hearing for the project or actually anything anybody wants to talk about.
And then there's going to be other data that's going to come in from the D O T that the public will not comment on as well, correct? Follow up?
Correct.
I mean, so there are items about the project that is typically not always available to the public to express their concerns on.
Much of the project, yes. The public doesn't comment on stormwater pollution prevention plans. They don't comment on the letters from Shipo. They don't comment on traffic impact studies. They don't comment, you know, comment when we have weapon radiations. There's a lot of information that the public doesn't generally comment on.
Larry? There are levels that are posted in our law and in the, um, in the state law as to what type of changes on a site will trigger requirement for a, you know, public hearing, okay? And if you take the P D As as an example, a relocation of a road, or not a road, but a parking area or a sidewalk, don't trip that. The addition of relocation of a building, do, we can point to that. Point to our recent experience on Warren Road. Those perfect examples of both of those threshold levels.
So, again, it's my opinion that the relocation of the sidewalk, it's just a small, it's really insignificant. It's not making a major change about the landscaping, the greenery, or risk in regards to traffic patterns.
I'm in agreement.
You're agreeing? I don't, I think we're, I think we're okay, in my opinion. Alright, one, again, question, one last question, and we've got to end this meeting.
Between the last public hearing and today, have there been any other significant changes to the time that maybe would trigger a public hearing?
No, we asked that, we asked that today, what changes. Okay, I think we're going to, we're set for today on Danny Mart. Thank you, fellas. We'll go over one other question.
Sure. On the E V fast chargers?
Yes.
Are you specifying at this point, what level of charging?
No, like I said, I got that light in my eye.
Well, no, it will be level three. But we have not, uh, before we build a bank of five, as we talked, we may start with probably two units. You know what? But we want to provide enough space for a bank of up to five. But they will be level three chargers, so they'll be fast chargers.
And we encourage you to get together with a homeowner. Hopefully, you can work something out during the next meeting, please.
I'll get you a show. Sure.
Alright, I think the next... Joe, you've got to give a presentation. I get, we're set for today, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, believe it. Joe, John, we have a day in December, right?
The nineteenth, then.
The nineteenth?
Yeah. It's the nineteenth.
Okay. We won't blow it. We'll focus on the...
So, do you have a meeting the twenty-sixth?
No.
No? Okay, so we have a meeting the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, sorry. Board members, it's the nineteenth for the next meeting. For the review of the two.
I believe you have a training. I'm sure people can make...
You want a train? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Alright, fellas, we're doing... Joe's going to give a presentation on what happened with the town, the last town board meeting. And we're done for Danny Mart for tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to meet with Wesley Carter, who has surgery.
Fellas. Good luck to her.
Can you do one more? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Don't forget those elevation plates.
Okay, there's three things I wanted to bring up. The first thing is we had a presentation from Frank Lindup on the changes that are coming up. New York State allows the towns to change the amount of the threshold for low-income people. We did a reduction on their property taxes. And we have planned to fix out poverty with the county and the schools, which is bringing it up to thirty-five thousand levels instead of twenty thousand levels for the income. I'd like to give somebody numbers, like in our counties and counties and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the idea is to raise the threshold so more people are paying?
No, raise the threshold of what qualifies for low-income?
Qualifies with a high income, isn't it? High income low-income move up.
Right.
More people would be, exactly.
And it should be, it should, it's easier just if everyone's similar, whether it's the school, the county, the town, or all the segments, a lot easier.
Right.
That's cool.
And the maximum's actually much higher. I think about sixty thousand is what the state legislation, you know, Jay's recommending. And we do it incrementally and see how it impacts the community over time. You know, do it in spaces instead of one big jump. The town board is very amenable to this. We're probably going to do it at a separate meeting or at least do the first process of it. I don't think we'll do it all in one meeting. We might have to do a public hearing anyway. I'm not sure it's accurate on that one. But we're going to start then. Does she have something to say?
What's that?
She has something to say. Look like you're...
Yeah, it might be related. Well, I'll let you finish. I do have a question for you.
Okay, well, if it's on this, we can go over here and down.
Well, I had to deal with the town and the budget in regards to the percentage increase. I heard some numbers out there. Do you have any numbers? The spending increase percentage-wise?
We did not raise it from last time and I turned on what the number was.
So, the spending didn't go up from last year? The total spending?
Spending went up. I gave you the number last time and I turned on what it was. And I remember it totally wrong if I did it off...
But the tax base went up considerably. So, the rate might stay the same, but the town is spending a lot more money this year.
Rate goes up as well.
Yeah.
Because all our expenses are going up.
Right, but I heard a sizable number, which I was a little surprised to have on the spending percentage increase.
Yeah, numbers are going up a lot.
Do you know what it is?
I don't know much, no percent, you know.
Okay.
I can send you that stuff. You just look online and budget this. The first page of budget gives you all those numbers.
It's greater than ten percent.
Yeah, it's significant. It's going to hurt. But, yeah, so we're not having votes. We're starting the process of a new draft enforcement law for the code department. We parted that out. It should be a very quick process to update it. It hasn't updated in, what, twenty years or so?
Something astronomical.
It's way too long. And so, the town board voted to start that process. The code committee is going to look through it. And we should have that back in January, February, is my guess.
I think February would be reasonable.
Yeah.
So, it has things in it like, like, when a permit expires, right? How long you wait for a permit to expire? Currently, you just renew your permit.
Lynn was happy to take your money every year.
Right, right. But the problem is that the code changes every three years.
Some of the codes are to comply with the state's codes, like the size of, I think, the shed and things like that, right?
And we forgot about that in front, because they're fifteen years old. And so, we want to change that. And there's other things in there, too, that need to be...
Will they be grandfathered in? People that are still finishing projects that have re-permitted each year?
Well, they're re-permitted each year. I think, that's a good question, Lynn, whether or not they need a new permit or can renew. I'm not sure how it's handled.
It depends on which phase of construction they're in.
Yeah.
So, if they're through all the rough ends and they're getting it finishes and doing things like with siding and what have you, it's probably not going to trigger any code change, but...
We should look real hard at that.
There's no draft yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Maybe we can draft it.
There's no information to give you.
Well, you understand what... It's nice to have, be thinking about things, of people that are building their own houses.
It is, but a fifteen-year-old building permit is five code cycles ago, and that's significant.
But the engineering should not significantly change underneath all that and have to go...
Yeah, it's not going to change your frame of record.
Foundation, et cetera, and so forth.
But it might figure smoke detectors or something. Scott's working on it very diligently with open permit holders.
Good.
To work through their projects and try to get them tidied up in time of the day.
But we wouldn't necessarily start all over again. We'd start the process over and then be subject to these building regulations for saying, can you do a few more things that you weren't going to do originally?
But you're not going to change the basic engineering of the building at that point that was legal and whatever fifteen years ago.
Well, hopefully, it doesn't take you fifteen years to build a building. But that's still a process. We'll see where that heads. And the final thing I want to bring up is that we decided to do a highway agreement with the high staff. And that's been improved moving forward. So, is there any questions about town board stuff?
Where are we at with the highway mark?
Uh, we're starting the bonding process and then we'll go out and talk with it.
It's moving forward.
It's moving forward. And Al's not going to like the crunch on taxes, so that's for you.
Going off a bit from the design professional, or do you already have those?
It would be designed and then we've got, we've got modeled. It's what we want. We don't actually have our professional arms. That's going to be the next step.
I was thinking the other day that that barn's not that old. And I said, but wait.
Part of it is.
Oh, I know when it was built. And the first year it was complete, I came home from college and slept in the bunk room up over the tool crib for that big snowstorm.
But that barn's not completely going away. It's going to be re-managed. It's going to have the offices stayed on, but it's going to be a purpose to make a barn built next to it. A large part of that is so that we can maintain and use of the whole complex throughout the process. You can't tear down barns and say, well, you don't get a...
Now, I know exactly how old they are.
And I know the projected life of that metal siding and the insulation and things like that, so...
Can we pass that point of priority?
A little bit.
Will you be trying to use soda on the new barns?
Well, I assume we're moving the old soda over to the new barn and use it.
We have those collectors. They're probably getting toward the poop bath.
I don't know. And they're going to reuse as much of the stuff as they can. That's part of my understanding. But, you know, we don't have designs yet. We don't have planning. We just have preliminary. This is kind of the idea that we want.
And so, with the new barn, that's a question I forgot to ask at the meeting. What are you going to do with the heat? You can't use gas then, right? There's no new hookups.
There's no new hookups for it. I don't know what the barn has right now, so I can't answer that question.
But I mean, new barn. Then you're going to run propane or electric?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't have an answer to that.
There's a propane supplier close by.
We don't have a design.
I know the county is going to weigh in heavily on the side of air source.
You can't do that for a barn. You can do it for the offices, but you can't do it for a barn. Because once you pull that salt off, then the air source is never going to catch on.
Yep, yep.
And everybody understands that. And we went over half the...
No, I know. As a matter of fact, even for heating in the slab for a big storage building like that, they still recommend water.
But that's still going to be designed. I'm sure we'll be able to fix the offices themselves to benefit them.
Right, you could put any splits in even for those.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. And then possibly some of the work areas. Because this building is going to have several different water stations for repair stuff and some of the other work.
Yeah, if they could close them off.
But of course, that's all still to be specifically designed as opposed to schematically designed. It'd be a little bit harder.
Exciting.
Alright, thank you, Joe. Neil and Aaron, hopefully, you're going to want to continue with us. Did you guys make application?
I haven't yet, but we need to make an application.
You guys for the next week, please, if you want to stay with us. And it's just, I think it's just a matter of... You already have application on five. I think you just copy it.
I think you've got to do another one, but it could be basically the same as the one you turned in.
Yeah, just...
Online form.
Well, then you just come in and have Heather copy the old one and just put a new date, right?
Why not? Put one more year of experience on it. Work on that the next week or so?
Okay, have we gotten information about the mandated? Okay.
I asked that question earlier. He's going to get to it soon.
Okay.
I have to appeal to a higher authority.
Ah, there are any?
So... Oh, man, I'm so...
I went to the state credit.
So, if anybody still has their trainings for planning, not the state mandated, you know, sexual harassment or any of that or dealing with difficult people, but if you still need trainings on the other stuff and you need to get your four credits in, you haven't gotten it all. The New York State Planning Federation, I just mailed them. They said, hey, let us know what courses you're interested in. We'll send you the links. The links, you watch them and you tell us when you're done.
Well, we've got dozens of recorded.
Right, and we'll issue your certificate.
Yeah, they're really easy to do.